Okay, welcome to the Thursday, November 17th, 2016 edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we begin this evening, I just have to ask if anybody's recording the meeting this evening? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Also, just for the record, a little housekeeping issue. You can see that there's only four of us here tonight. Mr. Marin is away on business and Mr. Cussy has not come yet. So, in order for us to continue with the hearings, I just want to let you all know that you would have to have a supermajority, which means all of us have to vote in favor of your request. So, if you feel as though that might be detrimental to your hearing, you're certainly welcome to continue it. And if Mr. Cussy comes in, obviously, then we'll move forward with all of them. So, our first 7:00 applicant is, I hope I say this correctly, TAC Realty LLC requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.7.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow for construction yard, a facility or area for storage, open or closed, of construction equipment or materials on property located at 45 Sword Street, Auburn, Mass., map 12, parcel 150. The applicant is present. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Broder, sir.
Good evening. By way of introduction, for the record, Lawrence Broder from the law firm of Fletcher-Tilton, representing the applicant. And with me is Tim Looney from Builders Systems. TACC Realty LLC is really an affiliated LLC with Builders Systems, Inc. at this point. The petition, as you noted, is a special permit for use of a 45 Sword Street as a construction yard, which is defined in the bylaws of facility or area for storage, open or closed, of construction equipment or materials. Mr. Looney and his wife own and operate Builders Systems, Inc., which has been located in Auburn since 1974, at 135 Southbridge Street. And the Loonies recently purchased the building at 45 Sword Street, which is currently occupied by House of Spices. It is located just, I think it's the second parcel in the industrial park area, Sword Street, and from Southbridge Street. It's a 1.4-acre site. Again, the current occupant is House of Spices. It's a general industry district, and it's Aqua Zone 2. The petitioner proposes to move Builders Systems to that site and to operate its business, the offices for the business, as well as store the equipment, supplies, and materials inside. And that is all that is planned, all that is currently going to be done, although I'll address some work that we anticipate will be done in the very near future. But that is what is, the petition here is to allow the moving of that construction company to this site. If you've been over in that area, and I'll talk about, the zoning is a little bit odd in that it's general industry to the 290 Overpass, and then it's the industrial park district, IP district from there. It's pretty consistent, but I thought, as did I think a lot of other people, that it was IP all the way from Southbridge Street in, but it isn't. It's general industry. And this is, the use is, obviously, you've got the application that states all these things, I'll restate some of them, it's use is consistent with other uses in the area. It's even a lower intensity use than you have in the parcel that precedes it. You've got the Casella Waste Management, you've got a refrigeration business. After it is, the distribution center for FW Web Plumbing. And then you go into the industrial park uses that go beyond, that start beyond 290. There's no stress or strain on town facilities here. It's industrial use, it doesn't add anything to, generally, to the, you know, it doesn't add anything to the school budget, doesn't stress down services, simply use police and fire when needed, and street and highway when needed. So, we're looking to have that permit approved, I will talk for a minute. There are some future plans, and the site would be improved by renovation of the building, which is going to be done for the use of Builders Systems, but there's going to be the possibility of an addition, which is likely to happen, but there is going to be a redo on the site, which is going to mean installation of appropriate water and, excuse me, of drainage facilities, and you'll have to meet the requirements of the state for everything that goes on in there, including infiltration, because it's in the Act 2 district. So, the stormwater management requirements of state would be met. So, again, have an improvement on the site, is what I'm telling you. But for now, this petition limits, is limited only to allowing the use on the site. We would have done whatever we need to do under the Act of the District, which would probably be a special permit for more than 15% impervious on the site, but those plans aren't done now. And if they were, we would do it, but they aren't, and it'll be done probably in the early part of the winter. They'd be back here looking for that special permit.
Okay.
That's really it in a nutshell. The petition has completely addressed all the site plan review issues, you've probably taken a look at it, it's very short and to the point. And we're asking that the board approve the use, so that the move can take place.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo, do you have any questions, sir?
I do. Construction vehicles or equipment, we all know they break down. They're going to be parked outside, and I assume what you were referring to is you'll be referring to anything that's needed for any vehicles outside, but where will those be repaired? Inside?
Let me have Tim explain to you what kind of vehicles he has.
Have the microphone, please, sir, introduce yourself.
We do not own any construction equipment, backhoes, anything like that.
Dump trucks.
No, would not be stored there. What we have, we have two Asuzu box trucks, two dump trucks and a van. So, we do not have onsite, we do not own any conventional construction equipment that you would think of, backhoes, Bobcats.
If those trucks break down, where would they be fixed?
We bring them to a facility in town or not onsite.
So, you do no repairing of vehicles inside?
Absolutely not.
How much storage of any chemicals, anything toxic?
Nothing toxic, other than building materials, there's maybe some adhesives, no gasoline, no oil.
Flammables.
No diesel, I'm sorry.
Flammables.
You know, there could be some, you know, we have five-gallon drums of, you know, gasoline, not drums, containers of gasoline, that we would fill a, you know, a snow blower that we use onsite type of thing, but no storage of anything like that.
Okay, and there is going to be some construction going on, right?
To renovate the facility.
So, I noticed that Caleb has mentioned it likely needed determination from the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
For that construction, so you're prepared to do that, as well as having the site plan approval by the planning board?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Nothing further at this time?
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
Just one question, because you're in Aqua for, what about, like, salt for snow removal, things like that? Do you do that yourself? Are you going to store any of that on the property?
No, we wouldn't store any onsite. It would be, we, as we do now in 135 Southbridge, we hire somebody to plow the lot, and if there needs to be some, you know, salt put down, they would supply it. There's no storage of that at all.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Ms. Blaze?
So, just what exactly, how are you going to be storing there? Or house there? Just your materials, or?
I'm sorry.
What'll be stored there? Outside or inside?
Strictly inside. We have concrete blankets, everything, no, there's very little, if anything, is left outside.
Okay.
All our equipment would be kept inside. We pretty much rent, or, you know, as we go, we rely on subcontractors to supply all that for us, but the only thing that would be left outside are the vehicles.
Okay. My concern was security, but you answered that, thank you.
So, could you just describe for me, do you do primarily residential or commercial? Can you give a little background on your current business?
I should have done that, but.
That's okay.
Tim's much better at that.
I'm sorry, that, no, we're commercial, industrial, no residential.
Okay.
Don't do any of that.
And you wouldn't be bringing back any waste materials from the construction site to the property, correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We would have our own dumpster onsite that we, and, you know, we have two dump trucks that we run to Casella all the time. There's no, I mean, other than what we generate in the building, we have a 10-yard dumpster for, you know, office materials and that type of stuff. No, that there's, nothing stays there at all. It all goes directly to the dump off the job site.
Okay. So, I know some companies I've seen in the past, they'll take a dumpster and they'll have, like, say, scrap metal, and they'll accumulate that in a dumpster for the purpose of recycling it and cashing it in. You don't do anything like that either?
No, we do not.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions?
I do not.
I'm good.
Okay. Would you like to add anything else?
Just so you understand, I think that the BSI business is commercial renovations, and they do historic work, preservation work as well. They've been in business since, we said, 1974, and Tim's been employed there since that time, and now owns the company.
Thanks.
Okay.
No other questions?
Do we have any others present? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the application?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve their request for a special permit under Section 3.2.7.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow the construction yard or facility for open storage or closed for the parcel located at 45 Sword Street, Auburn, map 12, parcel 150.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to just mention that there is going to be a site plan review by the planning board and a determination by the Conservation Commission also.
Correct, I was going to add that in.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, since we're only a few of us here, Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Obviously, you are, so, yeah, so, congratulations.
Very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
So, a 7:15 applicant, Charlie LLC requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.6.4, commercial parking facility in 4.3.5.1, Aqua for Zone 2, the Auburn zoning bylaws, for a commercial parking facility on property located at 25 Walsh Ave. I believe that was a request for continuation, is that correct, sir? Okay.
I'm just here to get questions on the continuation.
No, I think we're all set. I mean, do I have a motion to accept the continuation?
Motion to accept.
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, that 7:15 will be continued until 12:15. That hearing will remain open for public comment, in the event there is any. Okay, so, 7:15. So, we have to wait technically until 7:30, I can't open this next hearing for a few minutes, so I apologize for that, but that's basically the rules of order of how we have to do things. Do I have a motion to go into recess until 7:30?
You have a motion to go into recess till 7:30?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if we're doing a 10-minute, 15-minute recess? Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to come out of recess, do I have a motion to come out of recess?
Because remember, you, so, it says which ones.
Decides, perfect.
Motion to come out of recess.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're just going to do some paperwork, we're going to sign all the decisions that we have from last month first, and then we'll get into your hearing.
I wanted to, I was waiting for the agenda. Where's the, oh, you know why, this is the primary one, and they had to be done in five different parcels.
These two are yours.
I might have done this wrong. I'm always the one who signs the whole thing. Decide every day. I think they're just, I think she just tied up, she goes to make very important. I think I missed the last one. Nope. Two of this last.
Sir? That's the prime board, so it has to be signed. I have different locations.
This is for, oh, prime.
Okay, so, Mr. Chacolo finished up signing. We also have minutes to approve, we have the February 18th, 2016, the August 18th, September 15th, and October 20th, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, as stated earlier, previously, excuse me, and accept the minutes of the meetings?
Yeah, motion to approve minutes as stated earlier.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved.
Thank you.
I mean, I think that's at least a credit.
We start in about two minutes. Okay, I think we're close enough, we want to get started? I think we're close enough with this one, we feel safe and get started?
Motion to come out of recess?
We, yes, we did that, but we'll do it again officially. Motion to come out of recess?
Sir, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we have a 7:30 PM applicant, Francisco Rondon, hopefully I said that correctly, requesting a variance under Section 5.4 Dimensional Regulations of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the setback requirement of a pool deck on property located at 108 Boyce Street, Auburn, Mass., map 11, parcel 53, is the applicant present. If you could approach the microphone, please, sir, introduce yourself and give us a little background.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Francisco Rondon. I'm a resident, well, owner of 108 Boyce Street. Been living there for about a year and a half now, and this past summer, I put up a pool, requested a permit for the pool, and in doing so, ended up putting a deck around the pool, which I wasn't aware, at the time, that I needed a permit for the deck as well. So, I had a deck placed for the pool, and found out shortly after that a separate permit was required for the deck. And that's why I'm here this evening.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo, do you have any questions, sir?
Yes. Was there a separate permit being petitioned for when the issue of the pool deck came up?
No.
Or you just discovered it and then went for the permit?
No, I requested the permit for the pool when the pool was constructed. And in doing so, bought the house, like I said, a year and a half ago, and after doing so, I had some funds left over after I bought the house, and it was suggested by my father-in-law that he would help me do the work to put a pool, a deck around the pool. And that's where I got the misinformation that with the permit for the pool, that it was okay to go ahead and build a deck with that permit. That's where I wasn't aware that I needed a separate permit.
When did you become aware that you needed the permit, and how did you become aware?
I received a card, I believe, from the, from the town inspector, if it's Richard, Tavres, Travis? I might have the name wrong.
Okay.
I received a card and a letter stating to get in contact with him as soon as possible, and I did so, and that's when I became aware that there's a process now that I had to go through as far as seeing if I was able to keep the deck up. And that's when I learned at that time that there was a separate permit that needed to be issued for the deck.
What is the size of this deck? I see, I see where it's, where your pool is and how the deck slightly wraps around the pool.
Yes.
How long is this deck?
I wrote the numbers down, I haven't seen the paper that I wrote it down on, so I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I know when I did the application for the permit, I wrote it down on the sheet there, but I haven't looked at it since, sir.
It looks fairly sizable.
It does.
Is it a shop or bike?
It is.
And?
And the reason being, once I got the permit for the pool, and as I said, I was misinformed as far as the construction of a deck, so we thought that we would make it a decent size, because it's above-ground pool, so that in the case that I could set up a seating area or something on top of the deck, so that if kids are swimming, parents are allowed to be up there on the deck and be able to watch over the kids.
It looks to be, I would guess, it's got to be 35 feet long.
I wouldn't say 35.
Well, it encompasses the whole pool, and the pool's 26?
Right, so I think it's about, yeah, I think it's about 30.
Okay, and the depth of the deck is 12 foot 7?
12 foot 7. Like I said, you have, I don't have the machine in front of me. The length of the pool, the side, the side is in question as far as the variance, I think is a 12-foot side.
Yeah.
That's 5 and 1/2, I think it's about.
That's 12 foot 7, which makes it 5 and 1/2 feet to the lot line.
Correct.
Okay. And this structure is already in place?
It is, sir.
Okay, going by your house, I could see the topology of your land, it was a pretty good, pretty good-sized slope, and for a variance, you need three conditions.
Mm-hmm.
They all have to be met. One of them is the topology, which I think you've said that your lot satisfies that condition. The second is that due to that topology, there would be a financial hardship, and this is, this would be if you were applying for the variance, you're asking for forgiveness instead of permission in this particular case, okay? If you were applying for the variance, okay, that topology would create, could, in my mind, be tied to, the hardship could be tied to the topology. And the third is, there's no public harm, okay? Where I'm hesitating is the hardship, because if you were, I know myself, I would have said, put a jog in the deck on that end where it's there, and have a decent-sized deck at almost 13 feet.
Right.
I have doubts in my mind as to whether the financial hardship condition can be met now, so that that's something I'm going to probably listen to my cohorts here as they ask you questions, and then I'm going to want to speak with our inspector also on that.
Okay.
Other than that, I have no other questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roach?
I'm interested in some information from Caleb too, so I guess I don't have any questions at this current moment.
Okay. Ms. Blaze?
I have a couple. So, you built this yourself, you said, with your father-in-law?
Correct.
Do you have any background in carpentry, or building, or construction, or anything like that?
I do not. He was pretty much the brains behind the operation, he's been doing it his whole life.
So, he would have known that he would have needed a variance for this, or no?
Well, when I say he's done it his whole life, he's pretty much done that type of work, say, like, a hobby of his, or he's always helped out people constructing things. So, I'm not sure if he knew as far as the actual variances and things of that nature. Well, obviously, he didn't, because we just went by the permit for the pool, and that's where I got the information that I was okay with the deck, which obviously I wasn't, which I would have known, because from the plot plan that I received, I had the room to move the pool around initially, and the deck, and have everything fit. And through my, through my lack of knowledge in that sense, everything could have been shifted, I could have avoided all of this had I known originally that I need another deck and everything before the pool. But, like I said, everything kind of just happened, this is a little bit of funds that I had after I bought the house, and sometimes when you're a homeowner, you don't have much money, you know, I'm a new homeowner, and I at least wanted to give my kids a pool, and something so that, you know, for cutting back on family trips and things of that nature, that they could at least enjoy the summer with the pool. And like I said, I do apologize that if it did inconvenience anybody or any of my neighbors, but through talking, through talking with some of my neighbors about this, when they received the letter and everything, they've expressed, you know, that they didn't have an issue with it, and I know going forward, what needs to be done will be done, but I'm at least thankful that I have neighbors that I got to meet in the little time I've been in Auburn and have showed how kind they are, and their willingness to help out. I also have another letter here from my neighbor across the street, who I just recently met through this, through this matter, and I'm not sure if I could turn this into somebody, but, and the homeowner, she sent the letter in saying she didn't have an issue with it. But again, I do apologize, and it wasn't my intentions to build a deck, like you said, it's a large size and things of that nature, but I was just thinking, parents could be on top of the deck, could see the kids better, it's above-ground, you know, and God forbid, you know, something happens to a kid, someone needs to get in there right away, and something like that, and I wish I would have known firsthand, everything could have been shifted over the. I had gotten the plot plan, you know, I think I paid 700 or something. I had gotten the plot plan, you know, I think I paid 700 or something because the building inspector wasn't sure if it was originally going to fit. And it did show that there was plenty of room. And like I say, had I known from the beginning that I needed that special permit, the pool could have been set far enough with the deck, the size it is and everything to where it would have all fit comfortably. But it was my lack of knowledge in the matter. I'm a new homeowner and these things unfortunately you learn the hard way sometimes. But I'm hoping that you guys could look at it and you'd be favorable with the matter.
Well, I agree. We do have some great people that live in Auburn.
Yes.
We have some great neighbors. Did you have your pool professionally installed or did you do it yourself also?
The pool was professionally installed. I think it was PB Beach.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb, did you actually inspect the deck? Have you seen it in your consideration of its construction?
I have not inspected it personally. The local inspector was out there and he's the one that notified me about the deck.
So do you know if...
It would have to be inspected in the future moving forward to make sure it met code, but it hasn't been to date.
Okay. I mean, I don't have any further questions really because I think you've all answered what I was planning on asking. Okay, Mr. Chacolo, could you continue?
I notice you have a letter here from Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
And her property is at 79 Sumner Street, which doesn't affect, that's not affected by the five-and-a-half-foot setback.
I actually think that is...
From your plot plan, that appears to be the situation. You're direct next door neighbor, okay, where the five-and-a-half feet is. We don't, that's not Ms. Murphy, is it?
I can speak for her. I live directly next door.
I think Ms. Murphy is also, I think, is she, I want to say she's the daughter, I want to say, if I'm not mistaken?
Okay.
Of the lady that was, that lived there and the house is directly next to her house and that one as well. And I think the daughter is the owner now. The lady passed away some months back. So I think Ms. Murphy is actually in charge of that property there. She's the owner now of that property and that's why she issued that letter. Because I believe her mother passed away.
Do we have any others present? Would you like to speak, ma'am? If you could go up to the microphone, introduce yourself, please.
My name is Jennifer Grant. My husband and I both own the house next door at 104 Boyce Street. I mean, barring any building code violations that may come up with an inspection of the deck, I mean, that's between you and Mr. Rondon. But we don't have an issue with the proximity of the deck. We have a shed that's been on our property many, many years before we bought it and a tree line. I mean, it doesn't affect us in any manner. So if it's, you know, outside of any structural issues that you folks may come up with an inspection, I mean, if I could speak for them in regards to the deck remaining, I mean, we're not going to oppose it. So any questions you have for me, I'm happy to answer as well.
And you said you're at 104?
Yes, there's no 106.
Right, okay.
And Ms. Murphy's property, Mrs. Krog, Mary Krog is the one that owned the house. She owns a property behind me, so our backyard's a butt. But her side yard, the side of her property actually abuts his backyard. So where his pool is kind of affects there, but it is closer to my property than it is to hers. So I'm not sure hers was actually an issue.
Okay. Great. I don't think you have any other questions for that?
No.
No, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, just for the record, we also, as Mr. Chacolo mentioned, have a letter in support from Mrs. Katrina Murphy, 79 Sumner Street in Auburn, Mass., and expressing her support of the variance.
I also had another one here. I'm not sure if I could submit that.
Yes, actually, can I see that, please? If you don't mind? I'll just at least read the address and the name. Thank you, sir. So we have one, 111616 Lewis Escobar, resident at 84 Sumner Street, Sumner Street, excuse me. And he's expressing that he has no issues or concerns with the pool deck.
No, not a bother, right?
He was notified.
He was notified, yeah, okay.
Yep. Middle column, last one.
And no others present, correct? Okay. Now, is there any further discussion? No.
No.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, I will do that. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. To have a motion on 7:30 application for variance for Francisco Rondon.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance subject to the variance not being conveyed with a conveyance of the property. It would only apply to this current owner and would not go with the property. Second condition would be that the deck would be inspected by our inspector, excuse me, and match all codes, all building codes that we have.
Okay, I have that written down. Anything else?
That's the only conditions I have.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a second. Do I have a... Second here. Okay, Ms. Blais, how do you vote?
I approve.
And myself, Mr. Tatro, who's chair, I approve. So basically, you're going to have your variance. You'll get the deck and, you know, be able to keep it the way it is. But the conditions are that the variance will only remain with you. So if you sell the house, the people that purchased the home from you would have to come back before the board and have it re-inspected and have to apply for another variance. Also, that prior to the variance being granted, you'll have to have the deck inspected by our local inspector's department. And if there's any changes that need to be made, bringing up the code to make it stable, whatever it might need, you have to have that completed first. And just be careful, that might need a permit as well depending on the changes. You have to talk about that with the inspectional services department.
Okay.
And otherwise, so I'm sure you can be in touch with Caleb sometime during the week. You can try and make arrangements to get it inspected and move forward with the paperwork.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, good luck.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Dan.
Oh, gosh, right on time.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, like next week, give us a call. And we'll talk about what happens next, okay?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, so we're right back on schedule. So we have a 7:45 applicant, Bruce F. Bemis and Jeffrey McElroy requesting to amend a special permit for an accessory apartment on property located at 462 Leicester Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 21, parcel 24 is the applicant present.
I'm Nancy Bemis.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name for the record, please, ma'am?
Nancy Bemis.
Nancy, okay.
I'm Bruce's wife and Jeffrey McElroy. And we all...
Can you just explain, give us an overview of what you're trying to accomplish, please?
Sure. We came in March. We applied for a special permit for an accessory apartment. Originally, we had a 30-foot addition. And when we received the cost of that, we decided not to do that. We wanted to go with a smaller addition that was more affordable. So we came the night of the hearing and requested the permit for the smaller addition. And since that time, we have a new builder who has agreed to build the bigger addition at a lower price. And so we'd like to do that.
Okay.
So the only change is that we'd like to build the bigger addition.
Right, okay.
And we have gone before the conservation commission and we've received approval from them.
Okay. What's the total square footage of the addition you're led to put on now?
I think the part of the accessory apartment would be 698 square feet. It is a little more than that just because some of it would be the entryway to the main part of the house. So it's 30 by 21 would be the addition. So that would be, what, 610 square feet? We're going to use, some of it will be, the accessory apartment will be in the existing space.
Right, okay. Ms. Chacolo, do you have any questions, sir?
Prior to this, and this would be for Caleb, prior to this, when we granted the special permit previously, was there at that time a need for a Board of Health approval? And if so, would that have to be reissued? I noticed that there's a request that there be a Board of Health approval.
No, the Board of Health, nothing's changed as far as that's concerned. I wasn't overly concerned with the size of the addition changing. My main concern was the entry now is on the front of the house where the one that was approved, the main entrance for the addition was on the end of the house. And that's one of the issues that the board talked about with the applicant. And it's also one of the conditions of the bylaws. The intent of the bylaw is not to make it look like a two-family. You're supposed to make every effort to hide the entrance from the street view. So that was my main concern when they came, they applied for a permit with a different plan than was originally approved.
When you did view it, that stood out to you that that entrance would make it look like a two-family? It wouldn't look like just a side entrance to the main house?
I don't really have an opinion as to how it would look. I just, the way I interpret the bylaws, the intent is to keep the entrance away from the front of the house if possible.
And how much was the square footage again, did you say?
The addition?
The total square footage now that you enlarged it?
610 square feet is the addition.
Okay. Previously, it was 698 square feet, right?
No, that's the space, that's the floor area of the accessory apartment.
Right. That's the area of the accessory apartment that you're looking at?
Right, because some of that is in the existing space. That's why the addition is smaller.
If I may, the addition is going to be 610 square feet. They've taken a portion of the existing home and using some of that towards the accessory apartment.
I see, so it's gone down then?
The addition is bigger.
Yeah. Other space is going into, some space that was allotted for the addition previously is now part of the main house.
Right.
So that's where the difference is.
So the total square footage of this accessory apartment, the total square footage of it is 610, you say?
I think it's 698.
698, okay. That's what it says here.
Right. But I think what we're trying to get at is that they're reconfiguring the floor plan of the existing home along with the addition. So the addition would actually remain within the allowable square footage, but they're reconfiguring the floor space inside the house.
But it's all going to be considered accessory apartment?
Correct.
So that that's the number that I'm driving at? That's the meaningful number?
Mm-hmm.
I do have a copy of the approved plan if you'd like to compare the two.
If this is after you, is that it there?
This is the plan that was approved at the previous meeting.
Okay. I'll come down there. So that it's this area in here?
Yeah.
This in here is changing slightly. This is over, this is over a lot more than it is in this original drawing.
And so this plan right here?
The old one.
The old one that we gave the special permit for? Did we come up with a figure for the square footage of the accessory apartment on that?
700.
Yep.
700?
Yeah.
So that... Okay. This accessory apartment now appears larger on this plan. Am I correct in saying that?
Okay.
Right, because all of it isn't part of the accessory apartment. Part of it is, there are stairs...
You're using part of the existing house as the accessory apartment, right?
I'm sorry?
You're using part of the existing house as part of the accessory apartment now?
Yes.
So you're adding to the square footage of the accessory apartment?
That's not exactly true, sir. So basically, what it was, was you'll see there's a big square area that we were using for the original apartment. Some of that space is no longer part of the proposed apartment. So we're adding more, but the space that's going away in the current house is going towards the larger home, I suppose. So there's space that was part of the accessory apartment that's originally, that is no longer.
And what spaces?
Can I point it out on the...
Yes. I like it very much.
Okay. So, okay, so here's the original one.
Yes.
Basically, this whole space here would be the accessory apartment.
Yep.
But the difference now is that, okay, so here's the accessory apartment, but this space here is not part of that anymore. This is all part of the existing home.
So we can do this.
Correct. Actually, here because it doesn't include that as well.
So this is all existing?
Correct. So before, so originally, it would have looked like this. Now it's like this.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
And this is slightly shifted because this has a measurement of 5.6, this has a measurement of 22. So this is shifted over to here.
And it's also no longer a rectangle. You have the...
Right, right, because of the little, okay. And while you're up here, this is the door to enter the accessory apartment?
Correct.
But has no access, or it does have access right here to the main house as well?
Could be a door there also.
Yeah.
Door here.
To the entryway.
Door here.
Like the mudroom, yeah.
There is a separate door here?
Yeah, we wanted to put a door there.
Two doors, in other words, outside, interior.
Well, this, no, this would just be like an overhead. That's open.
Okay.
And then be a door here.
And a door here.
Apartment and a door here to their space.
And the second means of egress here?
This, this right here is a back door.
Okay.
We have a deck.
That goes out to the deck out back.
Yeah.
And this right here currently, right now, is not existing. There is no door there.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
There is a side door that's right here in the current space.
So is this, this will go away or be covered? And now this will be the door into the main house?
Uh, yeah, this. And then there's also the front door.
Right.
Right, okay.
So yes.
So that, so that this is really not visible from the road?
Correct.
But if this, as Caleb mentioned, okay, this could be viewed as a side entrance to the house?
I would say so, especially since, you know, from most angles, you wouldn't even be able to see it because the garage is there.
I took a walk down Leicester Street, that's where I walked. And I counted 13 houses with two doors on the front of the house. You know, and a lot of them were right next to the garage, just because those are the doors people use. They don't use the front door.
And this space right here is inside?
Yes.
When you enter this door in here, you are inside. It's heated, it's inside of the house.
Yep. Yeah, and the primary reason for putting a door there is so, is because we park our cars over here and it would be easier than having to come over here into the main, to get into the main area first.
The driveway is here.
Yes, correct.
Okay. That was enlightening. Okay.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah.
Okay, now, and the request for this is because the plans have changed?
Yes, right. We were told we needed to come back because the plan had changed.
Okay. All right.
And if I could just say...
And at the time you were here previously, did you subsequently get a Board of Health approval?
We did have that, yes.
And you still have that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Roach, any further questions?
I know we talked about the location of the driveway, but I always ask about the size of the driveway, so I have to stay consistent in my questioning. How many cars can park in the driveway? How much room is there for cars in the driveway?
Well, there's a lot of room. It's a big, it's a very large driveway.
If I can interject?
Sure.
I've been on the property.
Okay.
And there is sufficient, definitely sufficient room for, to park cars there.
Leicester Street isn't really a good park your car on the street kind of street, so I just want to make sure there's plenty of room.
You know, we could probably park 20 cars if we had to with company.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I may, all, all those items were already approved. It would simply be a vote, just vote to modify the plan. The permit's already been granted, basically.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? The motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of a motion for the 745, Bruce Bemis and, oh, I need a barter present, I apologize. None, hearing not seen, none. So for the 745 applicant, Bruce Bemis and Jeffrey McElroy, do I have a motion to, on the, on the matter?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment of the special permit for the accessory property on 462 Leicester Street, Auburn, MAP 21, parcel 24.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
And I as well. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
That's awesome.
Okay, well, right on time again, 8 o'clock. Okay, for the next hearing, we have an 8 o'clock applicant, RMZ Realty, requesting a special permit under sections 3.2.2.0 and 4.1.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the construction of a single-family dwelling on property located at 13 Holstrom Court, Auburn, MAP 25, parcel 80. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, do we can open the hearing?
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if you could just introduce yourself on the record and kind of give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish?
Sure, my name is Michael Zanaro, one of the partners in RMZ Realty. We have a lot with frontage on Holstrom Court, and it was originally, it's limited business, but it's the end of a residential street. All the neighbors are all single-family homes, and we wanted to put up a single-family home that would meet with what's in the neighborhood. And we went through conservation, went through all the process, we're all set, the only thing we need is a special permit.
Okay. Ms. Chikol, do you have any questions, sir?
Yes, Caleb, you've validated the conservation commission? Or have, I should say, have you?
There is a filing with conservation. I'm gonna have to look into see if it's still valid. I believe it goes back to 2013. It may need to be updated.
I would think so.
It was 2014, I think. It was good for three years. My order of conditions from, it was recorded with the registered deeds in Worcester.
And?
I might even have a copy of it.
And the, and the conservation commission for which you received the statement of conditions?
They gave me an order of conditions, yes.
And that was for them, excuse me, that was for a single-family residence?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and the size of the single-family residence?
Um. It's 1,500 square feet. I don't think there was a limit, other than the fact that it had to be within the limits of the bordering environmental areas. You had to be so many feet away from it and so forth. As a matter of fact, we designed the house more front to back versus left to right, just because we couldn't get that close to the environmental area on the left-hand side.
And was that for a sewed connection?
Yeah, water and sewer, that was one of the, it said if, if, the order of conditions said if water and sewer was available, which it is on the street, that you have to hook up. You can't put in the septic system if water and sewer is available, which it is.
And no other questions at this time?
Okay. Ms. Roach?
So the new house that you're proposing is, is about 1,500 square feet?
1,500, yes.
And you would say that's similar in size and stature to the other ones in the neighborhood?
There's three or four houses in there. I would guess they're all about the same size.
Okay, and you obviously will be hooking into the town water and sewer?
Yes, absolutely.
But you don't, there was, there wasn't a plan attached, was there?
There should have been.
Right, okay. Was there? Am I the only one who doesn't have it?
If I may.
Do you have it?
No, the plan is, is a plan attached, but in checking out, this is the piece of property that we're referring to.
Okay.
Right here, and this is, if you went into behind the old dealership there, the car wash?
Yep.
This is the brook that runs, in other words, you go in behind, and this is the brook that you drive by?
Okay.
Okay, here.
And this is existing?
This right here would be Town Fair Tire, I believe.
Okay.
This is, that's Weepin' Willys, that's Rayco, yeah, that's the backside of it, Wolf's Office.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and these are all existing, one, two, three, four, five?
Right, if you went in Town Fair Tire?
Yeah.
And instead of going this way, you just went that way, and then took a quick left.
Okay.
That's the piece.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Ms. Place?
Do you plan on occupying the home by yourself, or do you plan on selling it?
No, we're going to occupy. We actually own the property next door, we have the business right, we're in that.
Business do you own?
I own the deli, Weepin' Willys, and I also own, well, I've sold off Rayco, but I still own that property. Excuse me.
Thank you.
So I just have a question regards to the parking. I know it's, it's sort of partially paved, partially sort of open in dirt, you know, you get some puddles back there, that kind of thing when it rains out pretty heavily. I know that will probably be improved, but how is that going to affect the parking in terms of like the backside of Weepin' Willys and Rayco there?
This shouldn't make any difference at all. In other words, where the back of this house is, we'll fence it in right there, because obviously who, you don't want to have the, the back of that house looking into a commercial lot, so we'll fence it, put some, some type of shrubbery back there and so forth, but it won't, it shouldn't take any parking away at all from the lot itself.
I just want to make sure, because I know, it seems to me at one point now, if I pull in there, you might actually be parking on that lot, correct?
Um, we've had that lot, when this whole project is over, we're going to, we'll put a fence up, and then we're going to pave the rest of the lot and line it so that there's more spaces there than, it's just kind of hodgepodge right now because it's really not.
And I agree with you, and that's not the point that I'm trying to make, I just, it seems to me, like you said, I know that's, you know, you might take them space, and then you might have somebody parking three car lengths away from you. I know that's kind of how it works. I'm just trying to see how that whole organization would work in my mind, you know? That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, when we did our parking plan for the business, that space where the lot is now is not part of any of the, any of the parking itself for the, for the businesses that are there right now.
Right, right, okay.
I just have one. What's, do you know what the square footage on the lot itself is? I don't think I see.
I honestly don't know, do you?
It's a pretty good size.
17,000 square feet.
Okay, so it's well within requirements for, okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Ms. Chikol?
The site, you said you already were to the planning board? The Auburn Planning Board, have you been to the Auburn Planning Board?
Yes, we went before, and then, then we went before conservation, got a...
Was it the Auburn Conservation Committee? I thought you said something about Worcester.
I mean, here's an order of conditions, I don't, it says from Auburn, it says general information from Auburn, so I assume it was Auburn.
Okay, is that, and the site plan review, is that from the Auburn Planning Board?
Yes, it was from the town of Auburn, yeah.
And how, and when was that done?
We did it about two and a half years ago. They said you had three years to complete, you know, to, it was in 14. I can, well, I can tell you when the, when it was recorded, it was sometime...
I'd like to see documents on that.
Through the chair.
I can give you a copy.
Pardon, Caleb?
Yes, please.
I believe this conservation order of conditions, they have not been before planning. They would have to go for site plan approval?
Yeah.
After this, if the special permit was issued.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the special permit would only be under 3220. I've got some information that they're in fact not, I can, I can say that they're not in the flood zone from some of the other information I've been able to obtain.
But they are not?
They are not.
Okay.
So they would not need the special permit under 417, just the 32...
Just the 3220?
For the purpose of the applicant, I'm gonna strike 417, and we'll just go with 3.2.2.0.
Okay. And, and we're gonna need updated site plan review as well as conservation commission?
Well, I think we can probably just make a condition that, ensuring that all those timeframes have met.
Through the chair, if I may.
Are those, those are not valid?
I would have to verify if the conservation filing was valid prior to issuing the building permit.
I have a copy of it if you'd like.
But the site plan review?
I don't believe the site, I don't believe they've ever been before planning. They would have to get the special permit before they went to the planning board.
And then you can verify on the conservation commission?
Correct.
Okay, and if it is not, that can be a condition, that if it is not, then an updated conservation commission?
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I have a copy of it that was recorded too, if you'd like to have it, of the actual order of conditions. It was recorded sometime in, oh, 14.
3/26/14.
March of 14.
And that order of conditions pertains to this lot plus the lot that Weepin' Willys is on, or?
Just this particular lot.
Just this lot? Okay.
Yeah, because they're both two separate properties.
Okay. I'll, I'll take a peek at the order of conditions if you don't mind.
Um, yeah, let me see if I have a copy of it. I have my original here.
I'll give it, we'll give it back to you.
Oh, absolutely, because this is the one I had, the...
Yeah, the stamp.
Recorded the stamp, but that's the one.
Thanks. Yeah, it's pretty.
You have the big copy? What happened, the big page?
Jim Paul LaGuana Brown.
Yeah, but then I'm because you said you had the copy.
No, it's not.
216.
I can't use the big, big page. It's the only one I have.
That's 24th.
Uh, yeah, it looks like it was February of 2014 that it was issued.
They're good for three years?
And they're good for three years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, and we can say that it expires prior to the actual commencing of the building, that they renew it.
Very good, Megan.
Because it, I mean, in February, three years will be February, so.
Very good.
Does anybody else want to see it?
No.
Just want to give him his original, or we'll keep that out for his original. You want to take that back? Yeah, that's the recorded one.
Based upon, based upon that, I'll, I'll go along with whatever conditions you add to it, meaning the, the site plan and the pair of you, and that, I want, you know what wording to put in.
They have to do site plan.
Yeah, you know what wording.
Okay, any further questions, a conversation regarding this?
Not for me.
All set?
All set.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the 745 applicant, Bruce Bemis, oh, no, excuse me, RMZ Realty, requesting a special permit under section 3220 of the Auburn zoning bylaws?
Sure. So I'll make a motion to approve the request for special permit under section 3.2.2.0 with the following conditions.
Okay, just go slow for me.
Sure, yeah. One, they get site plan approval, which, I mean, they need regardless of what we say.
Mm-hmm.
Two, that any existing order of conditions that was previously...
Issued.
Issued, be complied with. And if the previously issued order of conditions lapses during construction of said single-family house, we would want them to go back for conservation.
During, during construction or prior to construction being initiated?
Um...
I notice the trees are already...
We may have to look at, we'll have to look at the wording on that, on what the law is. I think it's just a matter of going, getting it extended with conservation.
Right, I think so. At any time in the, yeah. I don't think they need to have it prior to having the site plan approved. I think it's just renewed if it lapses.
I think it's just, I don't see the house being built before February, by the time they go through planning, so I think it's just a matter of housekeeping to get it extended for.
Extended, right.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Please. Ms. Chikol, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
And I approve as well, so good luck. So what we have here is your, request has been approved, for the special permit will be issued, but the conditions we have is that obviously it gets site plan approval, which you'd have to do anyway, that any existing order that you already have for conditions in terms of conservation or wetlands management has to be complied with, and I think Caleb had mentioned, because he most likely will not be able to begin construction prior to February when this expires, they'll work on getting that extended for you. So we'll have that documentation as well.
Yeah, I think they told me that, when I went to see them, if you didn't have it, now, does it have to be completed or started by the end of February?
Well, I think that's what Caleb had just discussed, we're gonna, we're gonna look into the wording on that, the language, to make sure it's accurate first, and if it does need an extension, then we'll, they'll work on getting that taken care of for you.
Okay.
Do we need to address the...
No, that's actually what we planned, though. No, that's why I said I'm just gonna strike it.
Because of the flood, okay.
As long as they don't have, I just have the...
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Did we conclude, did we conclude the vote?
We did.
I was reading.
Yeah, you said, yeah. Everybody gave it a go. All right, we start with... Do you want this one?
Can I start?
Larry.
Do you want, sir?
Because, I know the old plan, but leave this.
Let us, let us get this back soon. Oh, look at us, we are right on time again.
All right, we're, we're...
Really, we are.
How'd you find the Bigfoot?
Really, right on time again.
Easy, crazy. Wasn't that like the same thing? When I looked at, looked at this...
Yeah, I told my husband my home at midnight. Don't wait up. He said, "I'm good, I'm getting Chinese food."
There you go before like a...
All right, so...
I welcome, these look like, so, thank you so much, yeah, thank you very much.
Good luck. Good luck.
Yeah.
Okay, so considering we are moving along right on time, we're going to keep on trucking here. So we have an 8:15 applicant, Chacheroni Properties LLC requesting a special permit under section 4.1.7 and 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for professional office use on property located at 813 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 66, parcel 101. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Todd Broder from Fletcher Tilton, here on behalf of the applicant, Chacheroni Properties LLC. With me tonight is Mel Chacheroni, one of the owners in the sling in the front row, if you will. As you discussed, we're talking about 813 Southbridge Street. This was the former McDonald's, been closed down for a while now, but painted gray, so nobody knows it was a McDonald's at any point. Very, very sleek. The property is under option by the Chacheronis from McDonald's Corporation. The corporate office owns this particular site. The zoning on this site is highway business, Aquifer III protection, Ovalay District. And for the trifecta, it's in the flood zone A as well.
Okay.
Bit of history, so it was the McDonald's. It was developed in about 1983 as the McDonald's, and at that time, it received a couple of special permits, but maybe most pertinently, a special permit for being in the flood zone A, and a special permit for rendering impervious greater than 20% of the property because it's in the Aquifer III. The project here is a reuse of the existing building, an existing site. The property will be converted into professional office medical space. The site remains the same by way of curb cuts, landscape areas, dumpster pads, all of those issues, all those items, drainage, they all are being kept the same, same as what it is today. This is really interior renovations to the building, and probably new skin and some new work. Obviously, the playground area, which was all glass windows and things like that, won't remain. That'll be converted into additional office space. So we're here because section 4.1.6 of the zoning bylaw in particular says if you're making substantial improvements to the structure and you're in a flood zone A, it triggers the need for special permit. Since there will be substantial renovations, turning a restaurant into office medical space is obviously a fairly large change, we figured it was appropriate to come in and file for the special permit. We've... Sorry. Last night, the Conservation Commission took up the matter, and we're awaiting their positive decision, but the meeting had no issues of note. We'll be at the planning board in two weeks. I should say, the discussion at the Conservation Commission, and one of the issues that I did need to raise was specifically related to some site work that needs to be done because during the due diligence period, environmental issue was raised. There is... This apparently was an old gas station, which to everybody's surprise, the maps showed potential for a tank. Some due diligence was done, some sonar showed something down there, and some testing's been done. So there is a proposed tank removal. So that process will be overseen by an LSP. Conservation Commission vetted all that last night and didn't seem to have any trouble issuing with the order of conditions. So that will proceed in the coming weeks or months. And so I mention that because partly there's got to be some excavation, and there'll be some repaving of that particular area, but it's limited to that area. So those areas impacted by the tank and the removal will be impacted, but the rest of the site will remain intact as it is. We did meet with DCG about a month or so ago, and there were very minimal concerns raised, and because we're going back to planning board, I imagine anything that was really pertinent will be raised at that point, and we'll deal with those issues as they come. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much.
Ms. Chakol?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
I do. Just a couple things. So when you say medical office space, can you elaborate a little bit on that? Is it like, is it just office? Are people going in for blood work? Is it a... Just give me a little more on that.
It'll be both. There are primary care physicians that'll be located in there. There'll be patients in there as office space as well. You know, typical office space, billing and administrative.
Okay. And do you know how many parking spots are on it now-ish? Like, do we think there's going to be enough parking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That was my question.
It more than meets the requirements under the bylaw.
Okay.
I didn't make note of that specifically for presentation purposes. It was discussed at DCG, and the numbers were very well in excess of what's required. I just don't remember the specifics, and I don't want to guess.
Yep, that's fine. And then obviously, some people who will be working in offices will be coming in the morning, working all day, leaving in the afternoon, but will be there for the duration of the day.
Correct. Certainly be less, anticipate less trips than a busy McDonald's would be.
Right, okay, right. I was of operation-ish.
This is not intended to be a ready-med type of operation.
That was my...
Where there are extensive, you know, particularly open after-hours. However, some of these offices are now doing some extended hours and some weekend hours. I think you've probably experienced that with your own medical professionals, but just to try to cater to everybody who seems to be very busy, there are now some operations which are doing that. So I wouldn't want to have any limitations in that respect because I don't think they...
No, that's okay. But not a ready-med per se, that's where I was going with that. Not a 24/7 urgent care center.
Correct, right.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Place?
I have nothing.
Okay. I don't have anything either, so anything to add, Ms. Chakol?
I do not.
Okay, so I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a better...
Oh, any voters present? I apologize, I do have some people walk in. Can you approach the microphone, please, sir? They have to be able to hear you at home. And can you just introduce yourself on the record, please?
I live up the hill of that McDonald's building.
What's your name, please, sir?
Young, Y-O-N-G. Young Wong. Because I got the letter for the public hearing, I thought my neighbor is here, but I'm the only one, so... I just never know there is an old gas station down there because we live on the Prospect Hill.
Okay.
Now, when the whole community is constructed, we only see McDonald's. We just don't know there is an underground tank or gas station on the old site. I have no idea about those. It's just a surprise to get the letter to know there is something they have to dig out. My question is exactly where is the tank and how much work will be done to remove it? And do we need any test soil? Or do we need to know as a surrounding neighborhood?
Okay.
Yep. It's pretty close. It's like 100 feet also from my house.
Sure, okay.
Yep.
Mr. Broderick, can you address those issues, sir?
If you want. If you want to stay right here, I can show you on the plan, and I'm not sure I'll be able to get everybody in the view, but the tank is over on this side, this area over here. So there'll be a little bit of digging in this area. It was described last night at Conservation Commission as when you were driving through the drive-through, when you were making your order, you were on top of the tank.
Right, okay.
So it's about in this location here. There'll be some excavation, but obviously, they do it in a very controlled environment. And a licensed site professional who is specifically trained to do that removal is on-site and has to observe, and the fire department is usually on-site as well to observe. There is testing prior to and then after the removal to make sure that it's not getting it... There was no contamination of groundwater, et cetera. And the results that were prepared by that licensed site professional up to date showed no indication of any groundwater issues. It was a little bit of soil impact from the old tank.
Yeah, because there are some white land, you know, on the bottom there. There's anything that's going to be spreading over the whole neighborhood, I guess.
Any sass, any concern, sir?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other further comments? Okay, now, turn around, motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion on the application?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under section 4.1.7 and 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws, professional office use of the property located at 813 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map 66, parcel 101.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chakol, how do you vote, sir?
Approve.
And I approve as well. So you're all set?
Thank you.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Hope things go well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We already handled all of our homework, so to speak, all paperwork taken care of.
Okay, so we have no other paperwork, we have no new business. We've already covered all that, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.